Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I think we have a few board members joining us online. And I know one board member is running a few minutes late. But we do, one, two. We do have a quorum. So we're going to get started. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Mark. Nice to see you online.
Nice to be seeing you.
Now we're on to approval of minutes. Oh, you got here faster than I thought, Paula. Welcome. I would entertain a motion to approve the October 8th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Paula. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. Mark, did you raise your hand? I couldn't see it. Okay, it's unanimous. And then I would entertain a motion for approval of the special meeting of the Board of Education Working Group on the Superintendent Evaluation Form Process and Timeline, which was on October 14th.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina. Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Is there any comment on those? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. And then that's it. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment, either online or in the audience? Moses? And then this woman, I don't know your name, but you can identify yourself when you come up. You'll be next. Go right ahead. You need to press the mic so the light's on?
Green, green.
Yeah, there you go.
Good afternoon, Moses Flores. I was yesterday on the town meeting, on the town hall. I know a lot of people don't know what's going on for the new school. You know. I just saw this paper yesterday, the first time I see this paper. About 144 million, point eight million. And we had to pay $28 million. I think that they're trying, you guys trying to rush to build something, some school. Because Kramer, Kramer's still there. We built our middle school years ago, 20 years ago. And because Kramer was bad, they closed it a year later. They opened it, they put little kids there. I understand now it's closed. Now Wyndham Center is closed. And you guys trying to build a new school? I think it's cheaper just, not cheaper, well, just to put the money on the schools we got now and building a school over there on the, next to the river, behind Plains, Big Top Apartments. And I just, people don't know, people, a lot of people don't know what's going on. Because I see, they always ask me, they all, people call me because they know I go to the meetings. I don't been to the school meeting for a while because my kids, all my kids graduated from school already. Only my grandsons and Barrows. But people ask me things, and I'm like, you need to call the school, you need to call this. So I just pulled a picture today on Facebook. Yeah, I think I already got like 100 something people like saying, that's crazy. You know, I said, go to, you need to go to the meetings. But I think you guys rushing this and not explaining to people how much it's going to cost, where the school is going big bill. And they're saying the schools, they're bad. I don't know. I don't. We're going to do the same thing like Kramer. Look, Kramer's still there. We still don't sell it. I know the town owned the school, that's the building. Yeah, now we close Wyndham Center. You know, we, I know Memphis, somebody's commenting about Memphis schools, one school, they build one school for everybody. From the beginning, Memphis always had problems. Well, they build that school for, one school for everybody, from kindergarten to whatever grade was. They always have problems because I know people who live in Memphis and they, they having a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thank you. This woman over here who would like to speak, come on up to the mic, please. Please identify yourself and make sure the green button is on. Or push it.
Now it's green.
Yeah, okay. Please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
My name is Tia Howell. I have a child at Sweeney Elementary. I have a child in the middle school. I have been, I am not happy with the uniforms. The uniforms need to go. And many people have told me that I need to bring it up with the Board of Education. The superintendent sent me an email trying to explain the reasonings behind the uniforms. Creating a sense, a greater sense of community, school pride and respect amongst the students. Have to say that's not the case. The uniforms don't show school pride. That would only be accomplished if everyone were wearing a uniform that has the school printed on it. That would unify the school. But without the entire school wearing the school logo, there's no school spirit. Okay? These kids look like tiny Walmart workers, for lack of a better term. It says, having a positive impact on the student's self-esteem. It's actually more the opposite, especially for the elementary kids, because it makes it so they can't express themselves or their individuality. It's kind of backwards that the little kids wear uniforms and the high schoolers do not, which is where the usual attire rebellious stage is, is in high school, not eight-year-olds. Reducing peer pressure on wearing brand name apparel. Again, not really a big issue with elementary school kids. That's more of the mean girls thinking. That's high school thinking. Eliminating improper dress and reduced distractions. Again, more of a high school problem. When was the last time you saw an eight-year-old wearing a Band-Aid for a skirt? It's usually the teenagers. Creating an atmosphere that reflecting seriousness of purpose about education. Yeah, it, I can tell you, it does that. They look institutionalized. Minimizing disruption by, caused by wearing inappropriate clothing or possessing inappropriate items at school. Again, more of an older kid problem. All grade levels with a dress code, that would be fixed if all levels had that dress code, not just the little kids. But as far as possessing inappropriate items at school, the uniforms don't change that. That would only be completely solved with a clear backpack policy, not what they're wearing. A Pikachu shirt is a Pikachu shirt. One that's $5 from Walmart looks like one that was $20 at the mall. So the bottom line is uniforms have no business in a public school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't know whether you know, but we're not allowed to respond. So we can listen to you and we will take into account what we hear this evening. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, hearing none. I just want to acknowledge under the Board Chair's report that this is the last meeting of this board, last scheduled meeting of this board. We could meet again if we decided we wanted to. But our next scheduled meeting is November 19th. And the elections are on November 4th. And the newly elected board members that are elected on November 4th will be sworn in on November 18th. So when we get together on November 19th, we will be, look a little different than we look now. For those of you who don't know, the Board of Ed has staggered terms. So some people on this board are not running, are not up for election. They have two more years on their terms. And some board members are running again. And we have some new candidates that are running. And I just want to acknowledge this evening that I know officially that this will be the last meeting unless we have another meeting before the 19th. For some reason, our last meeting with Alicia Rivera on the board and Ilda Ray on the board. Ilda's not here. She just was getting out of work late. She's going to try to join online. But Alicia and Ilda have been, have given a lot to this school district. As Ilda, previously to being on the board, as a parent who was extremely active in school activities and school governance before she decided to run and join the board. And Alicia, as a teacher in the early childhood program for several decades and decided to join the board in her retirement. It's a very laudable thing that you both did what you did. And I, and the rest of the board, I know, want to thank you for your service to this board. And we may, we'll be acknowledging any other changes at a, at a future board meeting. But it is the last time this particular group of people will be together on the board. I do hope people will get out and vote on November 4th. And I want to remind folks that there is a ballot question on the ballot regarding the Board of Ed's proposal to consolidate the elementary schools into one new elementary school. That's a voter decision. And what Mr. Flores referred, referred to in his comments, the flyer he referred to is an informational mailing that the town council voted on last night that will be sent out to all the registered voters in town. So that's, that's what he was referring to. And that's it for my report this evening. We're on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. We have two items from the superintendent's report. For the first one, we're going to give you an update on our professional learning that has taken place. And I'm going to call up Mr. Neil Weathers.
Good evening, everybody. So on October 10th, we had a district professional development day for staff. Just some of the highlights, all, at all of our school locations, we had a full day session that looked at student data over the past year in the beginning of the school year. And we went through and conducted a goal setting for student impact and professional learning. And we do that at every location. I have the, the privilege and honor of co-presenting, actually, with the Federation Teachers Union President at Sweeney. And we presented to their staff. So all our schools had those sessions for our teachers. Our WFEP members, and I see Ms. Link in the, the audience, they had multiple sections, sessions connected to best practices in the classroom. We've been running that model for a, a few times now, and it's been very successful. So they get to, to four or five different sessions, depending on the day. Our music teachers actually got the goal setting that everyone else did, but they also got an extra session from one of our music teachers on cultural competence, the group reflection and musical improvisation techniques. Those done by Mr. Robbins. A lot of good feedback from that session also. And not to, and usually it's, we think of our teachers and our pairs and tutors on this PD day, but it's open to other staff groups. For example, our nurses received sessions on school nursing practices. It's relevant to their, their job here in Wyndham Public Schools. And our before-after-school staff received some sessions on mandatory trainings that are important for their work. Actually, Ms. Beck provided those in this very auditorium. And that was for our before and after-school staff. So that all occurred. The feedback has been very positive for this session. So we are appreciative of that. We always send out a feedback form later in the day. So it was a very successful. Our, we actually had an early dismissal day where they had school-based PD today, October 22nd. And we have a full day coming up on November 3rd. You'll probably see my face again in a future board meeting, sharing those highlights.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Neil? A lot of different offerings, really much appreciated. And it is great that you're getting positive feedback.
Agreed. And one thing I didn't say, to put these on requires a lot of our staff. We've, well, sometimes we have external providers for certain sessions that we need them. We've, we have a lot of internal experts that give their, their time to present to our staff. And I'm very appreciative. It takes a lot of work for many people to make these successful. So I'm very appreciative to our staff for making that happen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'll leave it to you to take us to the next section.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weathers. As you mentioned, it does take a lot of time and effort to put together a professional learning experience that reaches all of our staff across the district. So we are appreciative for those who delivered professional learning on the 10th. So the next item that I wanted to discuss was what Neil mentioned in terms of engaging all of our certified staff on the high leverage goal setting. And I wanted to take you through the process that the staff went through because it was very robust. And it's one of the most critical moments in the year because we're setting really the, the road ahead. So first, we wanted to ensure that we're grounding our work on our mission and vision. We always start with that. Our district priorities, our areas of focus, our standards and multiple sources of data. And I'm going to take you through each one of those. We always start with our mission and vision because this is our commitment to our families and our students from Wyndham Public Schools. Our mission is to ensure that all of our students have equitable access to a high-quality education, that we prepare them to become productive members of society, and that we support them in their success, not only while they're here in school, but that they're able to be successful in college career and life. And our vision is to ensure that they're engaged in their own learning, that we are constantly challenging them, have high expectations, and they're supported by the entire community so that they have the competence and confidence needed to be successful. We always also ground our work on our district priorities, which are part of our district strategic plan. We have six priorities that have been identified by the board and by the district. And so the first one is student learning, of course, ensuring that we're accelerating achievement for our students, that we improve access for our students, and that we increase outcomes and ensure equitable preparation for a 21st century learner. Their second priority is staff learning and capacity building. We're not only want to ensure that we're recruiting and retaining the best and the brightest, that we have courageous leaders at all levels of the district. But also, I put in parentheses, building capacity because that is also one of our responsibilities and one of our commitments to anyone who joins Wyndham Public Schools. The third priority is partners as resources. So we are committed to engaging our community members, our families, our staff, that we're creating opportunities for us to engage in two-way open communication about equity, district priorities, so that we build trust and we ensure that we have a shared responsibility for student success. Our fourth priority is learning environments and it's making sure that we have spaces where students are safe, that the learning environments are productive, and that there's in this interdependent approach to academic, social, emotional wellness and civic responsibility. Our fifth priority is effective operations, ensuring that we're fiscally responsible and that we are looking at the distribution of resources throughout the district in an equitable manner. And our sixth priority is diversity as strength. Not only do we want to celebrate the diversity of our school community, but we want to ensure that we're engaging in addressing biases. So we're looking at ourselves, developing bilingualism, continuously cultivating cultural competence and empowering all. And so we went through, taking a look at what our mission and vision is, taking our staff through what the priorities are for the district. And you can move on to the next slide, please. As well as our areas of focus. And these were developed by looking at the data in the different conversations that I had throughout the summer with all of the stakeholders. We were able to identify these not only during our board retreat, but our cabinet retreat, as well as the leadership retreat. And this is what was shared with the rest of the school community. So our areas of focus for the 25, 26 school year are ensuring that our students are coming to school every day. And actually, we're making great progress. Ensuring that our students are receiving challenging and supportive instruction and that we are offering every single student grade-level, standards-driven content and that we're supporting those students who need supports as well. And of course, making sure that our students are in safe, welcoming schools, ensuring that they feel included, respected, challenged and supported. Next slide, please. And of course, we need to take a look at the standards. We have standards for our leaders that include the Connecticut Code of Professional Responsibilities for Administrators, the professional standards for school leaders, which are called the P, P, PSEL. We also have the Common Core of Teaching rubrics that we take a look at and ground our work in, as well as the Learning Forward Professional Learning Standards. We also utilize the Connecticut State Department of Education Guidelines for the Leader and Educator Evaluation Support Plans. As I mentioned our last board meeting, we adopted the plan provided by the state. And we also highlighted that there is a difference in the evaluation process from previous years where we now, there's a higher focus on ensuring that teachers and certified staff have the autonomy of identifying what are the learning goals that they want to focus on and so that they continue to grow, but also so they can have impact. So we're really highlighting the fact that the learning that we engage in as leaders and as teachers and as support staff, it is in order for us to show that our students can improve in some area. So there should be a through line between what we want to learn about and the impact that we want to create in our practice, in our schools, in our community, and of course, student learning. So through, after engaging in that discussion, we then took our staff through a data analysis protocol. It's been adapted from the Atlas Protocol. And so they first, we, if you think about the ladder of inference, we start at the lowest level. We start with identifying the data. Wyndham Public Schools is a data-rich district. So they had access to multiple sources of data. They then described the data that they were looking at. They interpreted the data. And then they started having discussions about what are the implications in terms of the instructional and leadership moves that we have to make in order to ensure the students are improving in terms of their academic progress. And then they engage in the high leverage goal setting process. After that, they identified professional learning and supports that they would need. What was it that they're going, are going to measure? And are they going, how they're going to monitor that throughout the year? And at the end, they had the opportunity to reflect in, on the protocol itself and also to identify next steps. So as you can see, this is a process that took the majority of the day. And it was a really robust way of looking at data and really thinking about where is it that we want to be as a district? And what is it that we need to do, not only as leaders, but as educators as well? The goal setting, then, we had teachers and support staff identify what was the student impact goal that they wanted? What is the, the part of student learning that they wanted to impact? And set a student impact goal. From that, they had to develop a theory of action. So if I engage in this learning, or if I implement this strategy, then I'm thinking that this is what's going to be the result. What was the rationale for what they chose? A professional learning goal, because we know that there's a lot of learning that needs to happen if we want to have some impact on student learning. And then they needed to identify what was the, what were the standards that were aligned with the goals that they drafted. The second part of the goal setting was then identifying what was the learning plan and the progress monitoring that they were going to engage in? What were some of the key strategies they were going to implement? Action steps and then identifying indicators of success. And individuals, for the most part, were able to go through the first five sessions or the first five steps of goal setting.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just, so each, each teacher did this goal setting individually for themselves and their classroom?
Yes. And I'll share with you some of the, some of the samples that we have of goals that have been set. Oh, there you go.
Of course, if anybody else has any questions, just raise your hands, too. Katina, did you have a question?
Good question.
Okay.
So we gave teachers and leaders a few sample goals to use as a reference point with the understanding that they had the ability to take a look at their own set of data. So if you have a classroom of kindergartners, or if you're a counselor, if you are a leader, your goals may look a little different, but we want to give them some sample goals. So this first one, for instance, is the student impact goal is every student in my class will make positive growth on the grade four ELA Smarter Balance Assessment when measuring by percent of target achieved. The theory of action is if I implement tier-one strategies with fidelity, including effective feedback, then student achievement and growth will increase. The rationale, historically, 20 to 30% of students in Wyndham have had a zero-growth score. And effective feedback is a tier-one strategy that has a Hattie effect size of 0.73. The professional learning goal, I will learn about effective feedback strategies and will implement my classroom practice. I will monitor how student performance is impacted. And then these are the standards that would be aligned with that goal. The second goal, we wanted to also give them a sample goal that was not academic, that was in, for social, emotional learning. And so the student impact goal was the number of students who are engaging in behaviors that lead to suspensions will be reduced. The theory of action, if restorative practices, such as responsive classroom, crew or advisory, are implemented with fidelity effectively, then the number of students engaging in behaviors that lead to suspensions will decrease. The rationale, research from the University of Chicago Lab and Morningside Center have shown significant decreases in suspensions, including students of color when restorative practices are effectively implemented. Then the professional learning goal, I will learn about and implement responsive classroom into my daily practice. And I will monitor student climate data throughout the year. And the last bullet point are the standards that are in alignment, such as creating a positive learning environment and promoting developmentally appropriate standards of behavior for our students. The next couple of goals that I'm going to be sharing are actual samples. The first one is from one of our leaders, our Nachok principal. So the impact goal, by June 2026, Nachok School will reduce their percentage of students identified as chronically absent by 10% and improve overall attendance, resulting in increased access to learning time and improved academic outcomes for students. The theory of action, if the school consistently engages and educates families, empowers students to take ownership of their attendance and builds a joyful culture of belonging and consistency, then more students will attend school regularly, providing greater access to learning opportunities and resulting in higher academic achievement and stronger engagement across, across all grade levels. And the rationale, of course, we know the rationale behind ensuring that, you know, students are in school. But one of the points made in the consistent attendance directly impacts student learning, engagement and academic growth. And each day a student is present increases opportunity for literacy, math... And each day a student is present increases opportunity for literacy, math, and social-emotional development. And you can go on to the next slide, please. So the professional learning goal for the leader is I will engage in professional learning through attending webinars and CAS meetings to deepen my knowledge of strengthening school-wide attendance systems. I will participate in daily analysis of attendance data and trends, identify barriers, monitor progress, and implement action steps. I will educate families through various modes of communication, workshops, and promote student awareness and accountability by self-tracking daily attendance. And I will monitor academic progress of those students who have improved their attendance status from the 2425 to the 2526 school year to assess for improvement. And then the standards are linked to the Connecticut Leader Evaluation and Support rubric. And the last sample is from a kindergarten teacher, who is going to be working on DIBELS assessments. And so the student impact goal is by the end of the school year, all of my kindergarten students will demonstrate measurable growth in early literacy skills as measured by the DIBELS assessment. The theory of action is by providing systematic and explicit instruction in early literacy skills, including phonemic awareness, letter-sound correspondence, and decoding strategies, and using ongoing DIBELS assessments and progress monitoring, I will be able to guide targeted instruction and interventions. And students will then be able to demonstrate improved foundational reading skills, resulting in increased percentages of students meeting or exceeding their goals by the end of the year. She gives the rationale. And then the professional learning goal, I will learn about and implement DIBELS progress monitoring and implement on a two-to-four-week cycle. For students of need, I will monitor student progress and analyze the data regularly to drive my instruction, and the student, the teacher provides the standards as well. So as you can see, we are not only engaging in identifying and taking a look and really understanding our data, where our students are, by looking at multiple sources of quantitative and qualitative data, but really thinking about what is it that we need as educators, as leaders, to engage in in terms of learning with the ultimate goal of impacting student learning. And so that student impact goal is critical, and it's something that we wanted to make sure that every single teacher, leader in this district is identifying, because at the end of the day, that is what we're here for. So I will pause, so that you can ask any questions, make any comments.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Katina?
Um, this might not sound very professional, but I'm going to say wow. And the reason I'm going to say wow is because the meta-thinking, the, and not only the breadth, but the depth in which the professional learning went through, I don't recall ever happening in the schools as I was a part of the system, too. And it not only looked at the numbers, but actually the self-reflection of the teacher in how to make those things happen, including both the academic and the social-emotional. So it must have been exhausting, and at the same time, very productive, critical thinking for each human that took the time and committed to these high-level goal settings, and I thank you.
Does anybody? Mia?
I just want to second what Katina's saying, and as a former teacher, I think this is really, really important, seeing that this is done at the level of the entire schools. I know that having peer support, teacher to teacher, and seeing that kind of support in additional professional development, where they're coming back and looking at their data then together, is really important and powerful. So, thank you. This looks, this looks like a lot of good work.
I have a question about, so follow, sort of the line of follow-through throughout the year. So can you sort of give an example of how with this teacher, or any of the other examples you gave, just sort of how would that, what would be the line of accountability and support and follow-through throughout the year for that, for that teacher and those goals, or that leader and those goals?
So it started really from the goal-setting process. So we have historically allowed, or given time for teachers to engage in this process for a very short period of time. If anything, we have, most likely would have said, you know, you need to submit your goals by the end of October, and then you'll meet with your principal or your evaluator, and then, you know, meet again at the midpoint, and again at the end of the year. What we wanted to ensure is that we are giving time for individuals to reflect, that comes to that metacognition, for them to reflect, to look at the student as a whole, and then think about themselves as the learner as well, because we're all learners in this process, and for them to be able to identify, well, perhaps I can partner with my colleagues from another grade level, even from another, from another building. But I think we set the tone with the process of engaging in the goal-setting. Now we'll give them an opportunity to engage in mid-year conferences. They asked, actually, Neil mentioned the feedback that we collected. I would say that 99% of the individuals who submitted a response to the survey, were very happy about this process, were thankful that we gave them the opportunity to engage in collaboration with their peers during school hours, not for them to have to do it, you know, as something that is an added responsibility for them to do after school. And they are asking for us to provide these types of opportunities again throughout the year. And so we will, we have already mapped out what that will look like for the rest of the year, and give them opportunities for them to meet in the mid-year point and at the end-of-the-year point. But they will also have, as you can see, one part of, if you can go back a couple of slides, please. I don't know if anyone is handling the slides. One more? One more? Nope, no, not a, back, please, if you can go back. One more? One more, please? One more? Right there. And so after setting the goal, not only did they have to set the goals, but then they had to develop a plan for their own learning, as well as progress monitoring. So as you saw, the kindergarten teacher said, now I'm going to do some cycles, I'm going to take a look at student data, and we're going to make adjustments if, as needed. So they needed to identify what are the strategies they're going to implement, what are the indicators of success, and to monitor. And so it was not only about goal-setting, but also about identifying, what is it that I need to learn? How am I going to do it? When is it going to happen? And how do I know that what I'm trying is actually impacting student learning?
That is an awful lot, but I, I was very impressed by the readings that we did during our board retreat. Where does the student expression of goals fit into that, or their interests? I know there was kind of a lot in those readings about knowing what the student themselves is looking for or trying to achieve. Does that play out in?
Depending on the grade level, students do have an opportunity to engage in discussions about, I know that definitely happens at the high school, would have to inquire where it happens at the other grade levels, but students do engage in goal-setting. And at the elementary level, one of the great things that the principal from Nachoog shared is that students are actually tracking their attendance, and so they're aware of whether or not, you know, they're on track, or whether or not they need to make some adjustments. And so even at the elementary level, students are engaging in those discussions about how is it that, you know, they are doing, and where is it that they need to be.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, this is very, very helpful. Thank you for sharing this with us, and gives us a better sense of what's going on in the schools, to help us move forward on achieving the goals that we've set for the district. And also, you shared at the previous meeting, or maybe, I think it was the previous meeting, where we are, Neil shared where we are relative to the rest of the districts in the state, and our own goals for improving outcomes for our students. And how this all fits together, I think, back to Paula's point, might be a, something to delve into further at a workshop and/or at our next board retreat, to follow up on what we all talked about at the first retreat.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're on to committee reports, and Mark, you're up for finance and audit. We met last week.
Yes, thank you. Well, the first thing we did, we reviewed the budget transfers, and if I'm correct, we'll be recommending transfers of $219,448 tonight. Neil, or can someone make, double-check my numbers? Part of the concern is an increase in subpositions, since we're having some holes in our certified that they're working hard to fill. And they, so also some personnel, well, the Personnel Committee will also be coordinating with, on this issue of making sure that we have the right number of certified staff. The year-to-date numbers are relatively early, it was, this was right after the budgets were approved, which we're happy to say we can now move forward with some certainty, though we're still looking at about $161,000 shortfall from what we requested as the very minimum that we needed versus what we were able to, to get approved at the, so we still need to look at that $161,000 shortage. The staff is working hard to keep an eye on it, to watch the state grants money, and they will be consulting with the state reps to discuss the impact of the state grants, or lack thereof, on our, on our day-to-day budget. With that in mind, the committee is also going to be recommending to the board that we not make cuts to the Wyndham Middle School sports programs or the high school clubs. Their administration has found some money in a Title IV grant that will help offset costs of the clubs. The feeling was that these are important activities for the kids, plus for planning purposes, we needed to get the approval out there so that we could start filling those coaching positions and whatnot. But the, the clubs and the middle school and the sports activities were important enough that we want to try and keep them as we can. And one thing we are doing is we're stopping any field trips that will have a cost to the district. This will not include field trips that have specific educational goals that are important to the curriculum, but we're not going to have field trips that have, just for the sake of a field trip, with cost to the districts. We also set the dates for developing the 2627 budget, which I'm sure we will forward on to the board shortly. And I believe that was it, or I should say that's what I can remember.
Thank you, Mark. We are talking about the budget timeline under discussion later on in the agenda, and are there any other comments or questions for Mark? Mary?
Well, I would just like to know what's the status of that $160-something thousand, which the Board of Finance sort of dangles in front of us. And also, I would like to say that traditionally, field trips have had a tie to curriculum, so perhaps our other schools need to make sure they put it as a field experience, so it doesn't get canceled.
The Board of Finance is taking up the $161,000 at the November Board of Finance That's what I was told at the last, at the October meeting. Anybody else have any questions or comments? It is really tough to be operating with a zero budget, and I think as we move through the year, we'll be having to talk more about how we make, you know, hear more from the staff about how we're adjusting and figuring it out as we go along. And that is one item that we might want to spend time on at a board retreat, is normally, this time of year, we're not really talking about budget, but I think that that's one thing we need to consider, talking about in a little more depth, about how we're going to navigate moving forward, and how we're going to approach the next budget cycle, given this report. Anything else?
Lynn, can I add a quick note of the Elementary Consolidation Committee?
Can you add what?
A note about the Elementary Consolidation Committee.
Sure, if the board doesn't mind, would you mind?
Just a quick FYI.
Just a quick FYI.
I want to make sure the board's aware that the town council approved the mailing, that they will mail the fact about to the taxpayers, and that on, we should, we, as board members, cannot, as board members, advocate for a yes vote, but as individuals we can, and we should just be out there promoting that people know they can vote on the referendums on the backside of the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions or comments? Nina, I guess you're the one giving the report from this working group that we put together. We're in our first year with Dr. Gomero, and we're working out the superintendent evaluation, the form, the process, the timeline.
I hope that Mary and Paula also jump in and help me out here, as the three of us equally were working on this working group for a proposal. All the board members have received the detailed, you know, details of what the meeting was about, but basically, we establish what usually is the timeline of the beginning, middle, and last part of the year. We considered some goals that we will hopefully discuss and talk about with Dr. Gomero at a later point. And Mary was instrumental in getting a form that we can use as a summary sheet, and we will talk about that, too. Finally, we also talked about a proposal, some questions to ask ourselves about our own board self-evaluation, and also discussed about, you know, some data that we found about mutual accountability, the board and the superintendent. So that's the summary of our meeting. Mary and Paula, would you like to add anything else, please?
Now, I just want to say, let's just make sure we do it and follow a process.
Absolutely. So I suppose we will meet at a later point with the superintendent. Thank you.
I, yeah, obviously, this is a full board job, not just, this working group was just to try to get the ball rolling and some, some forms and process together for us.
Yes.
The timeline is pretty well dictated by the superintendent's contract, too, which we've all seen that section of it. And I would like to propose that the board members give feedback to Mary, Paula, and Katina, based on the information that was shared, and then we schedule a meeting with Dr. Gomero to come to agreement. I know Dr. Gomero certainly has things to add about how we, we want to make sure, she has things to add, but we also want to make sure that the process, the evaluation, is actually tied to goals.
Absolutely.
That are tied to the goals that we've adopted for the district, and, and that we've agreed upon with Dr. Gomero at our first agreed upon with Dr. Gomero at our first board retreat, too. So we need to sort of connect all those dots.
All those dots.
Right.
So.
It may, I think it's going to probably require a special meeting of the full board to work through this and get it done, as Mary said, in the very near future.
Oh, yes. So please, you're welcome to email the three of us, include all of us, if you have any comments or questions. It was a very productive, yes, meeting, and we think we covered all the bases and it's a pretty good process.
Okay, so we'll probably return to having a meeting of the board and Dr. Gomero after we get through the November 4th elections. Does that make sense? Yeah. Mary?
This is just off-topic, but I don't recall ever having a personnel committee report from Paula, so that's been missing the last two meetings.
Did we miss that?
Yes, unfortunately, the last meeting, I was down in DC and Mark and Katina, and it took over for me. So we do have a meeting next Monday.
The one when we had the Spanish teachers there, I don't remember having a report about that.
That was, I wasn't there at that one. Yes, you're right. That's exactly the one it was.
Sorry to interrupt, but is my memory failing, Mark, that we did the report for the personnel committee in the last meeting?
Yes, I believe we did.
In the meetings. I apologize for that, but I did send them.
Okay.
But Mary's pointing out that it's not reflected in the minutes, so.
I'm so sorry.
Let's, can we work on that after this meeting, Paula, to make sure that we're getting the report of what happened and that the next meeting is next Monday, in case anybody's interested? And as always, any board members can attend any committee meetings, even if you didn't volunteer to be on that committee. And all those committee meetings are open to the public, too. Okay, well, so we'll follow up on that and make sure we get a full report maybe at our next meeting. Okay? Thanks. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're moving on to discussion items. And the first discussion item is the Jean Romano Scholarship for Distinction in Bilingualism. And there was a fair amount of information given to us in our board packets about this. I don't know how we're moving forward with this. I see Ann is here.
Yes, I would like her.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to call up Dr. Ann Anderberg, who most of you already know. Dr. Anderberg is a retired professor of education, with much of her work being in the areas of early childhood and bilingual education. She's also a former director of bilingual education and grants here in the Wyndham Public Schools. I also heard that she was one-year principal of the North Wyndham School, which is a story I'm looking forward to hear more about. And she is a former bilingual educator, a former dual-language program colleague and collaborator of Jean Romano's. And she is a longtime family friend of the Romano family, who is proposing this new scholarship for one of our graduating seniors. The Romano family has asked that Dr. Anderberg say a few words about Jean and describe the scholarship for you tonight.
Thank you. It's very nice to see you, Dr. Anderberg. Make sure you press the button so it's on green.
Got it.
Okay.
I had a little mishap and broke my ankle, so I'm limping around, but nothing would stop me from doing this. It's just a pleasure to be here. It's good to see Mark up there. There's a lot of people here who knew Jean very well. She was an institution in the community, incredibly devoted to the children, to the community, to the teachers, a phenomenal mentor, a phenomenal person. And it just gives me great pleasure that she was, she was my mentor for many years, and she was my friend after she retired and I took her position as director. And we remained friends right up to the end. And the summer before she passed away, we had a number of conversations because she wanted to have a scholarship here. And so I was quite delighted when her sons decided to pursue that after her passing. And so they've put together the funds to have a sustainable scholarship, and that's what they're proposing here. So like you said, Beth has done a phenomenal job ferrying this through for us. Chuckle, chuckle. But she met with Steve Romano, Jean's oldest son, and myself back in the summer, and helped us put this together for you. So I'm really just here to answer any questions, and hopefully we can do some good work for some of our kids.
Did folks get a chance to read through the proposed, okay, Katina, it looks like you want to say something.
Could some board member, or maybe Anita, sorry, Dr. Anderberg?
Anita.
Give a summary of what is proposed so that the public knows what the scholarship is about.
That's true. Could you give a brief summary for us? And there's, we're not going to take action during the discussion item, we're going to take action under action items, but we should be answering any questions or hearing any comments now. Go right ahead.
As it indicates, the family is proposing a $7,500 scholarship, bless you, each year for a deserving student who meets the criteria of having financial need, having participated in a Wyndham dual-language program during their pre-K to 8 education, graduating from Wyndham High School, having participated in any of Wyndham's world language courses during their grades nine through 12 education, and represent the spirit of Wyndham and support for bilingualism, biliteracy, and biculturalism. And so the hope is to really lift a student who needs the, who needs the support as they pursue their next level of education. And again, it's a recognition of her long-term commitment to dual-language education. She was not only a leader in this district, but really nationwide, and she was well-known in DC. She was a phenomenal grant writer. She made a lot of things possible for this district, and her passion was dual-language education. So she wanted a student who had benefited from that to benefit from this scholarship.
And there's also a process laid out there about who would be on the committee that would make the selection each year.
Would you like me to review that?
Quickly, real quickly.
Sure. That the family would like to designate a representative to the committee, that the Wyndham Public Schools administrator of EME or administrator-designee would be on the committee, the Wyndham High School administrator or their designee, a pre-K to 8 dual-language program teacher or educator representative, and grades nine to 12 world language teacher representative, and Wyndham High School counselor representative. That would make up the selection committee each year.
Okay, well, open it up for discussion, comments, questions. Katina, did you want to say something?
I am so grateful for this scholarship and to celebrate her memory, Jean. I can say that when I did my own dissertation for my own degree, there were numerous people who I interviewed for that that mentioned her and were thankful for all the work that she did years and years ago in Willemantec and in Wyndham Public Schools, that kids that arrived not knowing English, that were supported and loved and grew up and are now retired teachers of Wyndham Public Schools.
Yes.
And how she embraced all of us through time. So thank you very much to her family.
Anybody else? Paula?
I was on the board when the dual-language proposal came up, and I know Mark and Susan Collins in particular worked very hard on that. And we were just so grateful for all of the work and the ingenuity and the commitment that provided us with one of the best programs that we put forward in this town. This is wonderful.
Lynn?
Yes, Mark?
Certainly, I would like to echo those sentiments. I had the privilege of working very closely with Jean and Ann on the development of the Companeros program and Jean's dedication to the entire educational process of bilingual education. This is certainly a fitting memorial for her. She was a great asset to our system. I think even now, people from around the state are drawn to Wyndham to come and observe some of our programming because of the leadership of Jean in those early days. I also want to mention that we should be sure to wrap this meeting up by 8:30 because Ann is notorious for not being able to stay up late.
I knew you would remember that. We're now past my official bedtime.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It was great that Jean was able to be here at the Companeros anniversary. She was thrilled. She was thrilled. And down at Gilson, on the Shaboo stage last year. That was wonderful. So are there any further comments or questions? We want to make sure we let Dr. Anderberg get home.
At bedtime.
Yeah. Okay, well, then we're going to move on and we will take action. I don't think it's going to be a problem to take action. Okay. Oh, he's waiting to get a text from you or a call? Well, actually, I would entertain a motion to move that action item up on the agenda next and before we talk about the rest of the discussion items, if folks would be willing to.
I would move the acceptance of the Jean Romano Scholarship up to be discussion item eight, or what, discussion item eight, A2 or A1?
A1, yeah. We're moving up 9A to be right after 8A. Okay. Motion's been made by Mark and seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, so now I would entertain a motion to vote on approving the Jean Romano Scholarship for Distinction in Bilingualism.
So moved?
Motion made by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Katina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please indicate by raising your Enthusiastically supported, you can let Jean's son know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anita.
Good night, Ann.
Well, I think I remember at the high school graduation last spring, close to a quarter of the graduates had their seal of biliteracy. And like, that's really a testament to what was started here by her, so.
It's a testament to Beth's work as well. I mean, it's.
Well, of course, yes.
She was in close contact with Jean throughout, so Jean would be thrilled.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're back to budget timeline, and I think in our, yeah, in our packets, there was a proposed timeline for the budget, and I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gomero.
Yes, you have, I believe it's reference five. You have the 2627 budget preparation calendar proposal. It is a draft. We did present it and discuss it at the finance and audit committee meeting. We made some adjustments based on the feedback of the committee members to include an April date where we would present to, or the town board of finance would have their public hearing followed by a meeting. So we did open that, even though we don't, the dates we wouldn't have at this point, but we did add that to the calendar. Any questions or comments about the calendar?
For, just to remind board members, we have a few more meetings that are scheduled during the budget season, just because we have to have the budget approved by the board and sent to the Board of Finance by March 15th. And so we have the workshops, sessions, and things like that scheduled in here, and then we're subject to the town charter schedule after it gets handed off to the Board of Finance. So we just want to get it on the calendar. And is there any question, comments, concerns, changes?
I want to highlight that it mirrors last year's calendar.
Yeah. Paula, you wanted to say something?
I just said, I'm always happy to see the element where the principals meet with the school governance committees. I know, I'm hoping those are still very active, and I think it's a great way to get the information, not only getting family input, parent and staff input, but also helping the parents to understand the process as well. So I'm always glad to see that piece.
Okay, so that's an action item, so hopefully when we get to action items, we can adopt the budget timeline. And this will have Mr. Dolphin, give him his work, has his work cut out for the next months to work with us all on this. And next item for discussion is discussion of the board retreat. I sent an email out to the board members yesterday to say that I had heard back from board members, and a number of board members had conflicts with the dates that we had on the calendar. And also, I recall that when we set the calendar a year ago, we talked about having it after the elections, but we scheduled it like a few days after the elections, which may make it hard for incoming board members to be available. So Dr. Gomero and I looked at Saturday dates, and we're proposing, given the work schedules of board members, that we just stick to Saturday and try not to have a Friday and a Saturday, unless we have a bunch of board members who want to take a half-day off from work and we all meet on a weekday, but that could present problems. So the dates that came up were December 6th, December 13th, or January 10th. Do people have any preferences? Let's just go around the table. Paula?
I can say right now, the sixth, out of those three dates, the sixth would be the only one I have very.
Available.
Yeah, that's the only one I actually have available.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, the 13th is out. I do want to ask, do, you know, I think we could do a sort of retreat of a half-day, or, I mean, I'm not sure sometimes, you know, that we need the time that we allot ourselves, but it might, I might be able to do that the 6th, but that's, you know, kind of maximum grading time, and, you know, I take up the weekends mostly the first half of December.
How about the 10th of January?
I didn't, I haven't looked at it that closely. I mean, it's a big ask for a Saturday.
I know, but unless people are willing to, board members are willing to take a half-day off from work and we have it on a weekday, that's hard.
Or, you know, an hour or two before a meeting, possibly, but I would like to know what the agenda is, et cetera. So, you know, there might be some ways to do this without having a whole weekend or a whole day off.
Right. Well, when I say a Saturday, it's probably going to be like six hours on that day, but at any rate, I'm just trying to get a sense. um, at any rate, uh, I'm just trying to get a sense of what people's availability is. Mia?
Um, so I work full-time. Friday afternoons, I usually can do, um, six-hour, I'm not, I won't be able to do six hours, but I could probably do like three to four hours on a Friday afternoon, um, if we start looking at Friday dates. Unfortunately, December 6th, I'm not available.
Okay.
So I'm the opposite. Um, I could probably do a few hours on the 13th, um, or sometime in January 10th.
Okay, well, it's already looking like we're not going to get a date tonight. Anybody else? Brendan?
I was gonna say, as of right now, any of those Saturday dates work for me. I'm also in the full-time working boat, but I can take a half-day on a Friday if that's easier for everyone.
Katina? No, Alicia won't be on the board anymore, so.
Yes, uh, what the majority decides, because I am happily retired. But, uh, if the working people are willing to take the fifth, half-a-day on the 5th, oh, Mary can't.
Last day of classes, so.
Yeah. I mean, if you're a college professor.
Whatever you decide.
Okay, uh, well, and Mark, any thoughts?
Yeah, well, as a retired person, I don't get any days off, so. My thought was, maybe we, we rethink the, the timing, maybe, uh, four to eight on a Friday night or a Thursday night, so we're not having, forcing people to take half-a-days or full-day off work, but started it at four.
Well, we're getting a lot of no's over here to that idea, so, um, it sounds to me like I'm gonna have to, it sounds to me like I'm going to have to email around to the board, and without having a lot of discussion, uh, tonight, because I don't think we're going to resolve this tonight. If, uh, there, there are other ways to do this, as Mary suggested. We could have two, two-hour evening sessions rather than a half-a-day session or things like that, in addition to, uh, our, our regular meetings, or, um, we can have working sessions as part of our regular meetings, too. So, um, let's all put our, uh, creative problem-solving caps on, and I'm going to solicit, uh, input from all of you. Please send me an email with any thoughts that you may have about how we work through this. And of course, it has to work with Dr. Gamaro's schedule, too, um, and the new incoming board members. But, uh, let's try to get this figured out very quickly. In the meantime, I think I would like to, um, schedule a special working session with Dr. Gamaro, um, to keep the evaluation process moving forward. Okay? Okay, thanks. Okay. I do want to remind folks, though, on the, on the matter of calendaring and scheduling, I reminded, well, I, I informed Dr. Gamaro and Lauren, who are going through their first year cycle with us, that, um, we are required to submit our approved schedule for 2026 to Town Hall by early December sometime. So I've asked, um, Dr. Gamaro to come to us at our November 19th meeting, um, with a proposed calendar for board, um, meetings, uh, for 2026, for us to discuss. And one of the topics that has been put out there is, do we need two board meetings a month? Or should we, um, have one board meeting a month and then have, um, uh, special meetings if we need them? But we can talk about that, I'm just putting that out there, that we can talk about that on November 19th. Mary?
Well, I, I'm not sure about that, but I would like to know if every committee, I mean, I changed curriculum to meeting every other month, and I don't know if all committees need to meet every month, and also, we should be mindful of not overlapping meetings.
Correct. And we want to make sure we're not having meetings that are going to be, uh, like having staff who are staffing those committees all be, and jammed in the same few days of a week. So that's why Dr. Gamaro and her staff need to think about, uh, scheduling, and we need to think about scheduling after the elections. There's, there can be a rejiggering of committees, too. So there's a lot for us to work on in November before we get to, too far into December. Okay. So we're now on to action items. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed, um, to approve the budget timeline that was presented to us this evening.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. And then I would entertain a motion to approve budget transfers of, did you say $219,248?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Mary?
I thought it was 530. Hang on.
Mary's questioning the amount, yeah.
Hang on. Did I read it wrong?
I think, Mary, you're, you're looking at the year-to-date total?
Two, two nineteen, two forty-eight, rather than the year-to-date total. Yeah. I would just ask, um, just, uh, well, entertain a motion on that first. Two nineteen, two forty-eight. Who made that? Did anybody make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan. Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Katina. And just, you know, I would just, um, suggest that when, uh, the, the page that goes in our packet that outlines what the transfers are, I don't think there's a total on that page, so in the future, that would be helpful. There's a memo on the budget transfers that lays out the different buckets, but doesn't add them all up together.
Right. One of the issues was we, the transfer paperwork we had was not fully up to date. My notes indicate that 531, 632 was the original, uh, a number we talked about, but that was the total year-to-date. For this quarter, for this, this reporting period, we came up with a two nineteen, two forty-eight, but certainly we can get that confirmed by the, by, uh, our administration.
Yep. So, uh, any further discussion on that? That was recommended to us by the Finance and Audit Committee. Any, okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising their hand. Okay. The transfers are approved. And is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Mary?
Yeah, I, I just want to make this comment because I am concerned about board process and transparency. And so I would first like to express my regret to the children of Wyndham Public Schools who are being deprived of a gift made to the district two decades ago, without any ability to address the board, unlike a group of residents from Wyndham Center who received preferential treatment as they petitioned members of the board to get the frog back. Initially, they wanted to rescind the gift, which is illegal and unethical, and then they asked to borrow it. Unfortunately, the children of Wyndham Public Schools are all too familiar with having things taken away from them. I oppose the suggestion to create a plaque commemorating depriving the children of Wyndham Public Schools of their frog statue, and I certainly hope no public money will be spent on this. I oppose any district resources, including employees' time, being used to accommodate the latest ill-conceived plan to loan out the statue. Before any loan can happen, I request that the board see, um, procure a formal guarantee that expenses involved in this will be borne by the group intent on taking the statue, after the board has ascertained if the funds are sufficient. We must also demand an insurance policy paid for by Wyndham Center for the property of Wyndham Public Schools while it is away from the district's care and stewardship. I would like to know who can next petition for a loan of this or other school property. After all, this is a loan, and perhaps another town entity or private group would like the Wyndham Public School children's frog for a time. There was neither policy nor process followed in deeming Wyndham Center residents as the recipients of this loan. We never did nor could hear from everyone who donated to the statue. In any case, the board needs to follow the law and not arbitrarily rescind gifts. This is not going to continue behind closed doors. Once more, I apologize to the children and families of Wyndham Public Schools. You deserve better of your elected officials. I have often said how I would like to have a student representative on the board, but I no longer think this is a good idea. The board has shown that they will contravene policies, ask lawyers to provide rationales after the fact, and bow to the demands of certain groups. It's no surprise that young people are disaffected and don't trust the system. Being a board member is hard, and that, and I would like to make sure that I am involved, and the whole board is involved, in a transparent process, even though I don't agree with this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, um, seeing or hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:22.
I move, we move.
Okay, meeting adjourned.